Good evening and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 25th, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Ted, if you would, please call the roll.
Ms. Samurai?
Here.
Beverson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Landwear?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. First up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Natty? Discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Announcements, November 10th, Thursday, no school, it's a grading day. Friday, November 11th, Friday, no school district in service. November 15th, 5:00 PM, school board listening session. Also, November 15th, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. November 22nd, at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. November 24th and 25th, there's no school, district offices are closed. Correspondents, Superintendent Kelly, is any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there is not.
Thank you. Communication to the board, citizens and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone here to address the board? Okay, next up is the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report, treasurer's report for July 2016, and September lane changes. If we could get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly?
Yep.
Discussion?
To Chair, I ask that we move the personnel report for separate discussion, please.
Personnel report, any further discussion on the treasurer's report or the September lane changes?
Does the board treasurer review the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Is it accurate, as far as you can tell?
As far as I can tell.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Personnel report, Ted, you asked for it to be polled.
Yes, I guess I would move that for consideration now, this time.
I'm sorry?
I'd move the personnel report for consideration, just to move things along.
Okay. So, second on that?
Second.
Discussion?
Again, I'll be abstaining because I have not been able to discuss and become fully informed as I vote on this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstain.
Member Landwear abstains, motion carries. Acknowledgement and contributions, could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Ted?
Second.
Hala? I will read it and then ask for discussion. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B, B.20, permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $2,490. Under monetary donation of $210 was made to Valley View by Wells Fargo for student needs. Donation of $250 was made to Highland Elementary by Columbia Heights Lion Club for hats and mittens for student needs. A donation of $250 was made to Valley View Elementary by Columbia Heights Lions for hats and mittens for student needs. And a donation of $250 was made to North Park Elementary by Columbia Heights Lions Club for hats and mittens for student needs. Under value of kind, in-kind, donation of school supplies to Highland Elementary by Faldean American Legion Post 555 for student needs, estimate value of $50. Donation of a bike to Valley View Elementary by Leslie Shirk for FIAD Department, estimated value of $50. Donation of gloves and shoes to Columbia Academy by Stephanie Nowak for student needs, estimated value $100. Donation of hats, mittens, and scarves to Columbia Academy by Oriana Gata for student needs, estimated value of $500. Donation of use of gas grill to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Rental for the all-staff picnic, estimated value of $150. Donation of gift cards to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Kathy Kelly for the all-staff picnic, estimated value, donation of $320. Donation of sweatpants and mittens to North Park Elementary by United Church for student needs, estimated value $60. Donation of shoes to Columbia Academy by Francis Lewenstein for student needs, estimated value of $300. The motion for the adoption of foregoing resolution was duly seconded by. Okay, discussion?
Just want to say thanks. Yeah, it's great.
Anything else? Okay, hearing no further discussion, Ted, if you would, do a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Samurai?
Aye.
Aye. Severson?
Aye.
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
I like "aye."
Palmer?
Aye.
Landwear?
Yay.
That sounds cool. Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, very generous with people. Discussion reports and information items, board members will report on board activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Hala, I'll start with you.
All right. Since the last meeting, I had a short meeting with Superintendent Kelly, and I attended the academic lettering ceremony at the high school. That was wonderful. And the work session last week.
Thank you, Natty.
I've been having many conversations with members of the community, hearing from them and having conversations with them. That's been really encouraging and insightful, insight gathering from them. I also attended the work session, as did everyone, and as per the season, attended the varsity and university football games.
Thank you. Molly?
Hi, thank you. I've had several conversations with community members and parents in the district, attended the work session last week, had the opportunity to attend conferences at Columbia Academy in Highland, and also, in the same season, attended many football games and some adapted soccer games. Thank you.
Thanks. Laura?
Well, I also attended the work session last week and the conferences over at Highland. That's pretty much it for me.
Ted?
I was able to be at the listening session last week. We had two constituents come and speak to us, so thank you so much for doing that. Attended the work session, the two candidate forums, and then talked to many constituents, went through several ghosts and goblins to get to their doors, but so far, so good.
I also attended the academic lettering. It was actually impressive to see how many students are achieving at such a high level. I attended the football game against Fridley last week. I was also at the candidate forum. I'll echo Member Landwear, the listening session, we had a couple people come in, it was nice to have some people to talk to, appreciate them coming in. I was at the work session last week, and then we had a chair meeting prior to tonight's meeting. And that concludes my report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report today?
Mr. Chair and members, yes, I do. Local 710 would like me to announce that individuals unable to attend the October 18th School Board Candidate Forum can watch a video of the forum on the district's 2016 School Board Election webpage. The video is posted on the part of the school district for information purposes only. Secondly, our district will hold a free screening and a follow-up reflective discussion on the nationally acclaimed film Paper Tigers. That'll be from 3:30 to 6:00 PM, Thursday, November 10th, at the Columbia Heights High School Performing Arts Center. And for more information on that, you can contact our education support coordinator, Marshall Walker, at 763-528-4431. A reminder that there are no meetings Tuesday, November 8th because of election date, and I'd like to thank all school board members who have met or contacted me in the last few days. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up would be the building card, building vision card for Highland Elementary.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I'm pleased to be here this evening with Principal Michelle DeWitt to discuss the vision card for 2015-16. So as always, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this evening's presentation will focus on the core values of excellence, community, and innovation.
All right, I'll start with enrollment at Highland is very steady, consistent with the last few years. We're actually at 591 students when you include the pre-K students into the enrollment. Our demographics are nearly equal to last school year by ethnicity and free and reduced lunch, as well as with our demographics for special education students have decreased very slightly, left from last year 15.1% to 13.4% this year. EL students have, percentage of EL students has stayed very consistent. Our MCA data for last school year, we had a slight increase in math, reading, and science at Highland.
This is just, again, a visual representation of our mission, our core values, and then our strategic directions.
All right, and back to Highland's strategic plan. We're nearly the same as last year in most of these measures. I'll articulate any area that we have changed. I like to draw attention to A2. Certainly, all staff members are engaged in PLCs. Where we get hung up at Highland is with the four questions. All Highland staff members actually meet in PLC groups at least one time per week during their common planning time, but it may not be always around the four questions. They choose to look at academic data, attendance data, behavior, and it may not always fit nicely into the four questions. Again, the three areas addressed on this screen are the same as last year. The Dean Myers and I are completing the walkthroughs as well as our peer reviewers. We're seeing very consistent engagement throughout our building during the walkthroughs. We are seeing the presence of 21st century skills, not only visually presented in the classrooms, but as well as the students really showing 21st century skills with the use of personalized learning with, certainly now that we've added devices into fourth grade, that will increase even more. We're also in the last, the last measure, doing very well with the students, or with the students, with the teachers performing at Highland, our non-tenured teachers performing at a minimum of a proficient level, and the majority of our tenured teachers performing at either proficient or distinguished level at their valuations. I want to draw attention to the parent engagement in A, or in, it's not the same. I'm, I'm, I'll go back. I got one too far out of you. The other one, the other area that I really wanted to look at was the use of multi-tiered interventions. The last few years, we really have not focused on tiered interventions at Highland. We've gotten away from that by lack of staffing and having extra people to support running small groups, to support the classroom teachers, but we've really gotten back to that, especially in our testing grades of three, four, and five, of trying to purposely add back in intervention and/or extension time. So for example, in third grade, they have what's called win time, whatever an individual needs. So it could be extended learning at that time, it could be remediated learning, or it could be just on grade-level support. So that's one example in that area. In A15, I wanted to address, certainly we have an abundance of opportunities for parents to engage at Highland. Every month, we have at least one PTO activity, as well as often a building-led activity as well. Just a quick note of our last two rounds of, our first session of conferences, we had two nights, and Highland had 84% of our parents attending conferences, so which is amazing. But on top of that, really the commitment of the teachers reaching out to student, or to parents and students of those who were not able to attend, and having either face-to-face meetings as the first option, but also giving options of a written conference or a phone conference. So we have reached out to many more beyond the 84%, which is still a very strong number. In the next area, the MAP scores become a little bit kind of jaded in the fact that the strategic plan now is quite old, and we have really switched our focus. We're only MAP testing in grade two, so you're looking at the scores of a small group of students. So we did basically meet our math growth, math growth expectation for grade two, although we were slightly below the growth that we wanted to see in reading in that grade. When you look at the difference between the student groups, however, there was less than 10% difference between all of the students group, student groups in grade two, which is also indicated, I'll talk about that in the next slide with our MCAs as well. Again, the strategic plan that we set several years ago, at the time, our schools were all performing above probably 60%. We're passing in reading and math on the MCAs, however, we know from looking at the other scores, Highland did, sorry, cough drop. Highland did increase, and we're slowly making steady gains forward, but we are below the 60% in reading and math. However, when, again, when you look at the difference between our student groups, the gap is significantly less than state average. I also wanted to point out that in 2015, Highland's MMR, so our growth, the measure that includes growth, was 29.48. However, our score from 2016 was 35.82, so a six-and-a-half percent increase. So when you factor in the growth that the students made from one grade to the next, as well as the gap in proficiency, we did increase pretty significantly in our MMR And again, discipline, we do have a gap, and we do, each year, we work on targeting our students that are high needs. Generally, that's 5% of our students, accounting for probably about 80% of our referrals. However, out-of-school suspensions continue to be at a very low rate, usually around 100 suspensions per school year or less. Just a quick review of the committees that we have at Highland. We do have leadership, which includes our technology committee, equity and parent involvement, culture and climate, responsive classroom continues at Highland. As I talked about before, we have grade-level meetings that occur three times per week. So one time is either planning and then two times of data, or we have two times of planning and one time of data. That depends on what the grade levels decide. And then we also have a student assistance and a child study team. Celebrations for our committees is, again, we do offer, under parent involvement, numerous opportunities for our families to be involved, and they show us that they come. We have really, really high percentage of parents that come for open house, for conferences, for our evening events. Our equity and family involvement committee is another strong committee. This year, the equity committee and family involvement organized our fall Welcome Back Picnic and Information Night, which was a huge success. We served about 500 dinners, and that included multiple people that went through the line that chose not to eat. But we had a very high attendance, and lots of families stopping down to the classrooms to check out our new math curriculum. Responsive classroom, because we're several years into this program, is really working on maintenance, and so we're working with the young staff new to Highland to ensure that their responsive classroom skills are up to the standard of our veteran staff. And then technology, I just wanted to point out that we do have integrated technology projects at every grade level at Highland. So our initiatives for this school, school year is, at leadership, we're taking a strong focus, continued focus on continuous improvement that we had from last year, so we are continuing our work on rigorous academics, as well as high behavior standards, not only in the classroom, but in the hallways as well. Our parent involvement committee, as I said before, planned our all-school information night, and they will, parent involvement and equity are now the same committee. They'll work on other activities throughout the school year, including book clubs, though we do lots of staff outings around race. We have a strong equity committee at Highland. Responsive classroom, again, we continue to work on referrals so that our referrals are at an equitable level compared to our demographics. And our climate committee at Highland will focus on putting on our World Culture Day this year. We do monthly Citizen of the Month, and I Love to Read Month will be a combination of both our culture and climate committee and responsive classroom. So there are SMART goals at Highland in literacy. We're expecting by spring of 2017 to have 60% of our Highland students meet or exceed their growth targets in MAP, and again, that's just the second graders. This year, we were at 51% of our students, and by spring of 2017, 60% of Highland's third through fifth grade students will be proficient on the MCA test. Currently, this year, we were at 42%. But again, we're, every year, we look at our students moving forward. So last year's third graders, we look now at how they scored as a third grader, and look at our proposed increase as a fourth grader, and the same with fourth grade moving to fifth. Our SMART goal for math is by spring of 2017, 60% of our second graders will meet their math growth target. Last year, it was 45%, and by spring of 2017, 53% of our third through fifth graders will be proficient on the MCA. This year, it was 47%. In science, we hope to be at 45% of our fifth graders being proficient on the MCA. This spring, it was 34%. And then by, for our SMART goal for behavior, we hope to decrease the number of students sent to our time-to-think room by 5%, and then maintain a referral incident rate of black students at an equitable level. This year, they were, the black students accounted for 64% of our discipline referrals. That's it, questions?
What is the percentage of black students compared to the overall population of kids at Highland?
We have, it's 36% of black students, and 28% Hispanic, 24% white, 8% Asian, and 4% American Indian.
Okay, so the target is to take the referrals?
Be at 34%.
Is it referrals or suspensions?
It's referrals.
I missed that. To take it down by half.
Again, it's easy to do when a single student could have 50 offenses. It's not uncommon.
Yeah.
And that really sways your percentage. So what we worked on hard last year was getting students that were having large number of behavior referrals into check and connect. We do it in-house with our, with my dean of students, and the social worker are both social workers by trade, and it really reduced the number of referrals that the students had for the remainder of the school year.
Yeah, I was just going to ask what you were going to do, but yeah, check and connect is a wonderful program.
We do. It's, they check in every morning, they have a point sheet, they set a goal for the day, and then check out at the end of the day.
That's wonderful.
Do we still have programs, like REACH, where we're empowering parents to advocate for their students?
We actually have REACH going on right now at Highland, Tuesday nights. I think we're in session three or four. Three? Yes.
Is that pretty well attended or received?
It is.
Okay, great.
Mr. DeWitt, I just want to take a second to tell you, one of the compliments I wanted to give you is the new postcards that are coming home from the specialists. That's awesome, too, just any of the communication coming home to families. But when you talk about your parent engagement, it truly, it speaks to the commitment of your staff to reach out to the families and your leadership over there. So thank you, well done.
Thank you. I've also heard really positive feedback about the LEAP class, just the community is kind of talking about it, so, well done. Thank you. I have one curious question.
Yes.
So earlier, when you were talking about PLCs, you said there were four areas that the teachers are not, four questions that the teachers are not really wanting to focus on. Were those four questions?
They're from the de four, the de four, four questions.
Oh, the de fours, okay, got it, okay.
So they may be, they may be talking about the questions, but they're not specifically using that four-question model. I give them a lot of autonomy because the work is difficult, and it's during their planning time, and a lot of it needs to be very transparent conversations about how students are doing in their classrooms and progress that kids are making. And so I give them a lot of autonomy to plan how they're going to run their PLCs by grade level.
Yeah, so they're doing some kind of action cycle?
Absolutely. And they do record-keeping. So we have a collaborative document so that the dean and I are able to monitor the work that they're doing, and then we're able to attend the meetings and kind of stay abreast of what's happening.
Thank you.
Do you find that the personalized learning is being effective at Highland?
I do, because we, there are certain grade levels, obviously, that are better at it, that are, I feel more skilled at the work, but they really get down to an individual student level. So talking about this student needing this specific skill, or these five students needing this particular skill, there are some grade levels that have really brought that work upon themselves to even move students around during reading or math during a unit based on, let's say, a pre-tested math. I know my fourth-grade team just pre-tested in a new unit, and so the team met, that was one of their data meetings, to talk about what are the skill gaps for the kids in their class, and these are big classes, 28 students in a room, and they're talking about two or three students that really need this one particular skill remediated, and then this particular staff member that's able to do it. So it's very specific work.
Okay, and are those needs being communicated to the families, the parents at home?
Certainly at conferences, and I think on a case-by-case basis more than that.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is the transportation walk. Bill.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, I bring information back to you. The board had asked us to kind of recap and look at our walking distances, and I have some updated information from what we talked about last spring, when we're looking at our budgeting and some ideas. So again, we are here to create worlds of opportunity for every learner here in Columbia Heights, and tonight, we're really looking at community when we look at our core values and we look at our busing and transportation for our students. Right now, the way that we have the walking boundary set for our students here at Columbia Heights is the elementaries are set at three-quarters of a mile walking distance, and the secondary at one and a quarter miles. This is, it's hard to see, but I wanted to at least show you the map. You see that our walking areas really are at large when you look at the, in dimension with our, with our district. Right now, at Highland, if we look at what's the effect of changing the walking area, you know, by a quarter mile, so we go down to half a mile. Right now, we have walkers, 143 students that walk to school. Right now, we have walkers, 143 students that walk to school, or actually, most of those students actually get rides from their parents or guardians. So if we would move that from three-quarter to one-half, we would actually drop the walkers down to only 28, increase the ridership of 115 riders, but of course, that would require two additional buses to our routing to transport those students. You can see the black line, that's the walking distance that's right now, and then to pull that down by that quarter mile is approximately where that blue line is. I mean, before we would go, you know, we would study this a little harder if we would want to move this, it wouldn't be exactly the way this is now. When we move to Valley View, right now, we have currently, we have 157 walkers, and moving that one-quarter mile would drop that down to 76 walkers and then put 81, 81 more students on our buses. And of course, that is additionally two more buses there, not quite full two buses, but it is nonetheless two more buses. Again, you can get an idea of what that walking distance does. You can see the walking area, the way it is now, is the blue line, and of course, the red is to shrink it down that quarter mile. When we look at North Park Elementary School, it really isn't any changes. We have a lot smaller walking area there because of the interstate. That walking area is already relatively small. Right now, we have currently 25 walkers. Last time I talked to the principal, I think only, actually, only one student walks, the rest all get rides. But there would be no change to our busing by changing that boundary. This boundary actually remains the same because it's already less than three-quarter, it's actually less than a half. Okay, Columbia Academy. Now here, we'd be looking at changing the walking distance, a quarter mile would drop it from a one and a quarter down to one mile. Right now, we currently have 330 walkers at Columbia Academy. By moving it, we'd drop it down to 238 walkers, we'd put 91 more students on buses. So again, we would need additionally two more buses to transport those students. So you can see here, it also shrinks it down by an awful lot, and I think when you look at where we want, that this shrink really doesn't help us a lot when we look at neighboring districts, but it does give students lesser walking area. When we look at the high school, right now, we have walkers of 319, and by moving them, we would still have 191 walkers, but we put 128 more riders on buses. Now, I put two additional buses, it might not quite squeeze them on there, but it depends. A lot of those, a lot of those students don't necessarily ride bus or walk, they drive themselves. So we'd have to look at that a little harder, but we would need at least two more buses at this point to accommodate that quarter mile. So again, you can see how the, it shrinks down a little bit for our walkers for our So just kind of a recap of the number of students and the buses that we would need. At Highland, we would put 115 more students on the buses. We required two buses. North Park, of course, would stay the same. Valley View, we're looking at transporting 81 more students with two buses needed for that. Columbia Academy, two more buses with 91 students, and then high school, 128 students with two buses. One thing to remember, also, we're a two-tiered system, so even though it looks like we have eight buses on here, we really only need four. Four for the elementary, four for the secondary. The bad piece of this, of course, the cost, you look at approximate cost to add these four routes, would be $180,000. And then, of course, there was talk at the time we had our meeting last spring, like, well, what happens if we just transport all our students? So this gives you an idea of what would happen if we really wanted to dig in and transport our students. At Highland Elementary Student School, we'd have to have a minimum of three, three more buses. North Park, we would not need another bus. At Valley View, we would need three more buses, so that's 157 more students. And then Columbia Academy, of course, there's some large students that are walking, not large students, but a large number of students. 330 at Columbia Academy, 319 at the high school, and this would need five buses at each building. So when you look at 10 new buses, of course, that's a $450,000 add to the budget, which we really can't afford, I don't think, ever when you look at the future of our funding for our schools. So just in summary, if we decrease our walking areas by a quarter mile, we would need four new routes to do that, and that'd cost $180,000. And to transport all our students, we're really looking at 10 more buses with a, with a pretty large hit to the budget of 450,000. So this really gives you just a kind of overview of what we're looking at, if we really had to add some routes to shrink that walking distance. Of course, you know, even 180,000, that's a very large number when we look at our budgeting right now, because to add anything to our budget means something else has to come off. So there'd be some hard choices if we really wanted to do that. I really feel that this is probably something we can't do budgeting at this point in time, unless, of course, in the spring, we get some more money from legislature, you never know. But we would certainly know next spring, late spring. Any questions?
One of the points that was brought up at the listening session was whether it's feasible for students or parents to pay for bus transportation if they're inside the block zone.
Yeah.
Have you looked at that, or?
Well, I was just informed of that, of that, of that information that came at your listening session here last week. We'd have to do some look, some looking at that. That, it'd be a pretty high cost per person, and we really have to look at, you know, some people could afford it, some people can't afford it, so there'd be some hard choices. But we can certainly look at that and bring some information back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question about the secondary buses needed? You would need 10, but only six for the elementary, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But because of the way that we pay for busing, we would just add 10 buses.
Yeah.
And we would, that way, we'd be able to shorten up some buses, the route time-wise for the elementaries. They'd have less, you know, lower loads, but we're paying for the buses anyway.
Yeah.
So I would run all new 10 buses.
Okay.
If we went that, down that road.
Thanks.
How many bus routes do we have right now?
We have, I didn't even look that up. When, I think we have 19 that run for all our students that we're transferring now, but of course, that doesn't include any of our special ed routing or any of our homeless routing. There's almost just as many of those, too.
So we're, so to do all the students, we'd be looking at increasing it by 50%?
Yeah.
Wow. That's pretty significant.
What is the community, is the community's given, you know, requests for additional busing, or, I mean, what's the impetus behind looking at this?
Well, the board asked me to bring this information to you. From time to, in the fall especially, that's when we get questions about busing. I think a lot of, a lot of parents are kind of surprised when they have their student who's going from fifth grade to sixth grade, and all of a sudden, they were getting busing, and now they're not longer busing, oh, and their student has to walk. So that's a surprise to some families, at least that first, that first student's coming through our system, that all of a sudden, their student has to walk where they didn't in the past. So yeah, they're, they ask for busing. I've asked, I've had a lot of people, sometimes it's shorter for them to walk to a busing area where, you know, they only have to walk four or five blocks to get to a bus where they have to run, you know, walk six or seven blocks to school. We've, they've asked for that. We haven't gone down that road because it fills the buses up, and then we don't have space to pick up our students. So we've really held to, if you're in a walking zone, you need, you need to walk or make your own arrangements.
Okay.
Did you say that we don't have 180,000 right now if we were to add four buses? Did I hear you say that?
We don't have an extra 80, $180,000 in the budget. As you know, when we budget, we are really looking at that even budget, you know, we're going to spend what we bring in. So in order to, you know, increase our cost by 180,000, you know, something else has to come off in our budgeting.
How do you think, I'm sorry. Thought you were finished, sorry. How do you think this would impact, like, student retention of students who choose to leave the district? Do we have, was that any of that in the survey we had gotten from Springbrook or whoever did the?
We're going to do a new survey this fall.
Oh, right, right, okay.
So we don't have those results. I'm not sure how much we looked, how much that was noted in the last one four years ago. I think you have those results, but right off the top of my head, I really can't remember natty on that. I, I think that part of the discussion was when the board, in their wisdom, and it was, I think, a very valid choice, decided to do busing for all the kindergarteners and put the four-year-olds. And that was a big financial step for this district to be able to absorb that. And then, at that time, you had asked us to come back and say, how much would that really cost when we're looking at the budget? So Bill brought it forth tonight, but we're still trying to absorb picking up every kindergarten student and the four-year-old. So the legislature might be good to us, you know, next spring and, and school, you know, we can look at it and see if there's additional dollars, but when Bill says that we're gonna, we'd have to do something programmatically to come up with $180,000, 85 to 90% of our budget is personnel, so it would, you'd actually be reducing FTE in order to pick up the buses at this point in time, but you don't know what comes out of the legislature, so it's, it's an unknown for us to really give you a recommendation at this time, but we wanted to make sure that we were following up and making sure you had the information, and we could look at it, we'll get it again in the spring once the legislature's done.
Well, one thing that I've heard on a couple, a couple of people have mentioned was that, is that because of the large walking distances, that they choose to go to other schools because they will come into our district and pick up our students, and that might be the decision. I, it, it does seem to me that it would be a good idea to find out what, how many students we're not retaining, and whether or not there's a cost-benefit analysis for that. So that's your department, I'm sorry. It's, it's trying to figure out, you know, what students are not, are not, you know, going, you know, staying from fifth grade to sixth grade, you know, because of the walking distances, because they are fairly large. You know, not as large as when I was in school, we walked a lot further, uphill both ways.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up is the Summer Academy recap. Hey, Jen.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here this evening with Jen Babish, who's our staff development coordinator extraordinaire. Earlier this fall, I presented to you the Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement, and this evening, we're here to prevent, present to you information from the annual director's report from the Summer Academy program. Of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and Summer Academy is one of the ways that we do that. This presentation will focus on the core values of community, excellence, collaboration, and innovation. And with that, I'm going to ask Jen to talk a little bit about what happened at Summer Academy this summer.
Sure. Thank you for having me tonight. I had the privilege of serving as a board chair for the 2015-16 Summer Academy and witnessed firsthand the Summer Academy for 2016. Just as a reminder, Summer Academy is a consortium of 12 districts coming together, Columbia Heights being the host, to offer programming for high-potential students in grades first through 11th grade.
I'll just add that the first year Summer Academy offered Spanish classes. Jen was one of the teachers many, many years ago.
So just a recap of the overview of the presentation, I am going to just spend a couple minutes on classes and students, talk a little bit about teacher and retention of staff, talk about our communication that we do with families and parents, and then also the community outreach that is involved with Summer Academy on the open house night, and then just give you some updates for this coming year. One of the things that Summer Academy does is they have a summer preview for students to come because they're from 12 different districts, and maybe not be familiar with Columbia Heights Public Schools. They, Summer Academy offers students to come on a Sunday to walk into the buildings and view to see where their students will be housed for the three-week program, and so it's a great way for families to get a lay of the land and be able to find the best route if they're, they're transporting their students as well. Looking at the numbers, the, the data for the second bullet, the first number is for last year, and then the number in parentheses is the previous year, so you can see that there was a growth of one section added to Summer Academy and 17 more students. And then finally, looking, part of Summer Academy, we offer programming for our middle school and high school students that maybe feel like they've, they've done a lot of learning in a student role, and so there's a leadership opportunity there for students to be a teaching assistant where they support the, the teachers in the classroom and also attend field trips. We had 56 returning teachers with five new teachers, and just being a former teacher myself, there's just the, the excitement and enthusiasm of the, the teachers that provide the programming for our students is just remarkable, and teachers come back year after year because of the programming and of the students, so. One of the things that Summer Academy did was they revamped their website and really feeling like it was a great way for communication with families to be able to see what's going on and to get the word out about Summer Academy and what it all was about. And so just another piece of that was also making sure that it was digital for mobile devices so that families could look at the website on their, their tablets or on their phones as well, so that was another thing that was enhanced. And you can see that parents and families were very happy about that improvement, looking at the ratings from the survey that Summer Academy gives out, and then also just the number of views obviously increased, so. Again, more about communication, there is a blog that's featured. If you're able to go to the, the website, you'll see that each class has a blog about what, what occurs in the class, and then pictures, videos, really highlighting the work of the students in the classes. And, you know, again, parents, families really enjoyed having that communication and being able to, to see the progress that their students are making throughout the three weeks. One of the things I mentioned earlier was about the community outreach. During the open house, it, it really is a time for families to come together to see the work that the students are doing, and also kind of to give the students a preview of what, what can I take for next year. But also, something that Summer Academy does is they do food shelf donation, and so they ask families to bring food that night because they have such a large turnout, and that goes to Anoka County. So I'm just really proud that because Columbia Heights is the host district, that we're able to help out the community as well during, during this event. And then finally, just a parent guardian survey that goes out to families, really important that we're satisfying and meeting the needs of our, our families, and so just very positive ratings overall. You know, there's always negative comments that come with that as well, but it's, you know, those are some things like, I wish the, the classes would start later because my child doesn't like to wake up so early, you know, so some of those common things that you, you just experience in households. But overall, very high rating of parent satisfaction. And just an update for this, this coming school year and for the 2017 Summer Academy, the board did elect a new board chair from Roseville, and this past summer, we also hired a new executive director that will, that has already joined the board. Columbia Heights will remain the physical host and the fiscal host as well. And we couldn't do it without the, the students that attend Summer Academy, so we just have a few pictures to show you. And Director Senbik and I had an opportunity to go and visit the classrooms this summer during Summer Academy and see the work that our students were doing. What questions do you have?
Well, I just want to thank you for continuing to, to be here. Well, I just want to thank you for continuing to, to be here in Columbia Heights. This is such a positive thing for our district, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay there, Xena. Next up are action items. The assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. Xena, we got a whole bunch of people.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Every year, every school district in Minnesota, prior to November 15th, has to submit in writing the assurances that the school district is following state and federal laws regarding not discriminating using funds that flow through Department of Ed. So, we're here for your approval.
Motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly, discussion?
This basically is saying there's no discrimination in our district that was, we're certifying that.
Correct.
Anyone else? You know, further discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the superintendent's 2016-2010 17 goals.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, at the last school board work-study session, we spent a fair amount of time on these goals. And they are, there's one multi-year goal. It's a continuation of emphasis on American Indian education. And there are two one-year goals. And that, those two, in case you have forgotten, would be the planning and execution of a secondary day treatment over at the high school. And then, to do, the third area is leadership professional development in the area of finances for the district administration and building leadership teams. So, with that, I would like to ask your approval of my goals.
Motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Second.
Natty and Holla, discussion?
I just want to ask again that these goals, just to make sure that these goals will, are geared towards improving achievement within the district?
Yes.
Okay.
The finance goal in a probably a second-tier way, because you can, we do academic return on investment, and we look at it from that side. The other two are probably more direct, and certainly, the American Indian education one is the, is the most direct. Because I only say that with the second goal in mental health, it's a combination of academics and mental health.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm excited to hear the outcome of these. I just, I was encouraged by the choices and.
Thank you. More excited, too.
Yeah.
Here, no further discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next up, the additional work session on November 15th and changing of the December meeting date.
Mr. Chair and members, this is also, we had a conversation at the last school board work-study session. Really, this is asking you because of the election on eliminating a school board meeting time to add an additional meeting on November 15th. It would be primarily focused on finances. We have to have a meeting with the auditor that we'd like to place there and something on the 2017 probably levy update because you always like to have that before December. And so, that'd be the one. And then, the December 13th one, we would like to move up, excuse me, to December 6th. And Member Landwehr had a question, if that would have anything, if that would interfere with the truth in taxation meeting, and it does not.
Okay, motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Holla, thank you, okay. And just for clarification for everybody, but for us most certainly. So, that would mean on the 15th, we would have a listening session at 5:00. The work session would be at 5:30, and then, a regular school board meeting at 7:00. So, it would be three meetings that night for some of you. Okay? And then, the 6th would be a regular school board meeting, and that would be at 7:00 p.m.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I favor this because then we will still be able to get our work session in for, for November, which is important.
Anyone else? Here, no further discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Anything for board topics tonight? Here, nothing for board topics, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:55.